In recording. And you're on.
Thank you. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. We're now reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the GM RSD website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it's under tonight's school committee meeting. We are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording will be available on MCTV and the district website after the meeting. So, welcome to visitors. This would be an opportunity for public participation if anyone is interested. That's policy BEDH, and it has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but we've not had anyone request that for this evening. If you are in the Zoom audience, unless you are joining us, as we do have a guest joining us, hello Christina. Otherwise, please, if you're just in the audience, keep your camera and your microphone off, just so we don't have too much going on. Okay, thank you, and we will have Brian, important events.
So this coming Thursday is the opening day for pre-K and K students, September 8th. Next Monday afternoon, starting at 2:40 and going until 4:30, there are auditions for the high school, middle school production, fall production of Alice in Wonderland, and so for the second year in a row, they will, the high school will have both a fall and spring production coming out of the theater program. High School and Middle School Picture Day is Tuesday, September 13th. Wednesday, September 14th is an early release day. Sheffield Picture Day is Thursday, September 15th. I apologize, it should say Gil Picture Day is on Friday, September 16th. Hillcrest Picture Day is on Tuesday, September 20th. On Thursday, September 15th, pre-K and K students start full day. The Vaccine Clinic at Gil is still being held at Gil Elementary on Tuesday, September 13th, but has been moved back from 3 o'clock to 3:30, and will go from 3:30 to 5:30 PM. And these vaccination clinics will be for both COVID-19 and flu vaccines. The second one will be held at Turner's Falls High School on Thursday, September 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And then the middle school will hold its open house on Thursday, September 22nd at 5:30 PM. The high school will hold theirs the same evening, starting at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian about that? Okay, I am not sure if we have a student representative with us this evening yet.
No, I, well, I checked in with Sina earlier, and the student council doesn't meet until next week, so I happened to see her in the cafeteria. In addition to the fact that I thought she also had some driving time tonight, so I didn't plan on having her here.
Okay, but we're looking forward to her joining us later. All right, thank you.
You know more than I.
Somebody has to know, Heather.
I might have seen her longer today.
Thank you. Okay, then moving along, superintendent's report, Brian.
So a very brief report, I just wanted to note to the school committee that, as I did with folks on the administrative team and many conversations that I had with teachers, when students returned, it was very different. They, almost every student seemed quite joyful and happy to be in school, happy to see their friends, there were big smiles on faces, there wasn't as much trepidation and so forth as last year. And last Thursday, with that being the first day for students in grades 1 through 12, I feel like we really got off to a great start with the kids. I wanted to take a moment to thank the facilities and the cafeteria staff for their exceptional efforts in getting our buildings back together after two really extensive summer maintenance projects, as well as the cleaning that happened in the rest of the building. I'd also like to thank the administrative team and all of the administrative assistants for their efforts in organizing the start of the school year and connecting our families with our schools. Due to the amazing efforts of our tech support team, all teachers and students were able to get new or updated Chromebooks in the first days of school, including what was, as the teachers were getting their new Chromebooks, Tina and her team really did a phenomenal job of assisting folks right there on the spot with troubleshooting on that first day. And I think it worked out really well. So Tina, please thank your team, they did a remarkable job of getting a lot of technology into the hands of teachers and students. In addition, I would like to thank our teachers and our instructional staff for their work in welcoming all of our students back, and thank you to everyone for getting involved in getting our kids off to a great start for this school year. As far as COVID-19, Franklin County is still rated as medium risk after, as of Monday, September 5th. And although case counts have begun to go down a bit in in the state, as well as many area towns, including Montague, we will still spend time monitoring this in case we have to make changes. Unless the school committee tells me otherwise, that they don't want this report or this information to be included in the superintendent's report from meeting to meeting. And that's it for my report for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anyone have anything for Brian? All right, thanks. Next on the agenda, we have the Business and Operations Report from Joanne Blyer.
Okay, I just have a few things for you tonight. The operating statement to close out fiscal '22. This is a preliminary final report, so I'm still working through a couple of issues. You remember, we talked about being overcharged for our charter expense. And so they are reimbursing us this summer, and I just need to make sure I understand how that is supposed to hit the books before we close out fiscal '22. So there could be a few changes to this. So, based on this report, the way it is, our revenue was up by about $130,000, so that flows into E and D. And really, it was up for two reasons. One is our charter reimbursement. When we got overcharged for charter expense on the expense side, we also received more charter reimbursement than we should have received, so that's up also. So while the state fixed the expense side, like in mid-August, they did not fix the revenue side. So they're giving us this extra money, but they're not taking away the extra revenue, so I'm not sure how they're going to fix that. So I have a couple of questions out there for them. The other numbers that are up or down there, you'll see the transportation reimbursement was down a little bit. It's not really down, we created that transportation revenue account, and so we took some of our revenue and we transferred it in there. This is the second year in a row that we've done this. We did transfer about $50,000 extra, and it was a new account that they established a few years ago. So you can establish this transportation revenue account, you can put excess revenue in there, or some of your transportation revenue, and then use that to support your budget the following year. Because that number is sort of flexible, you're not really sure where it's going to land. It's based on prior year expenses. And then, once the state gets all of everybody's expenses, they know how much money they have to spend, and they back into a percentage on what everybody gets. So while sometimes we can get 75%, sometimes we can get 80%, the number's been a little flexible in that range. I think that it has gone up for our future years, though. So the number's gone higher, but for a couple of years now, we've been using this transportation revolving account to support a future year. And then our Irving tuition was down, and we had talked about that a couple of times last year, how our enrollment was down, and so our tuitions were down from Irving. On the expense side of things, we had some staffing positions that we had trouble filling, and so we have a surplus on the staffing line for instructional. And that also leads to benefit savings, because those people that aren't working for us also don't have health insurance. And then the last number there that I have a note on, you can see the overage for our charter tuition charge. Our revolving accounts are at the bottom, so school choice revolving, it's, it's higher than what we would typically like, we would typically like to have about one year's worth of reserve in there for what our revenue was, and it used to be closer to 800,000, now it's dropped closer to 6, but hopefully as a pandemic has ended now, that number will come back up. So our annual revenue and expenses could be right around that 800,000. Having a surplus in that line is good for our future years, because as the ESAR grants end, we'll have that surplus to sort of catch up a little bit, so we don't go off a cliff. Right, remember, some of our ESAR positions, the positions we added through ESAR are going to be temporary, they're not going to be permanent. So they're going to last as long as the ESAR money lasts, but sometimes it takes a little bit longer to wean off of those funds than you would hope. So having a surplus there is a good thing. Our cafeteria revolving is also high, and that's because for the past couple of years, we have been receiving the summer reimbursement rates for the food service program, and we've been able to feed everybody. For one year, we were giving them bags of food for the week, we were feeding them for weekends. And then last year, everyone remained free, and so by remaining free and getting that higher rate, more people are eating. We have the higher reimbursement rate for each and every meal, and so the balance has come up. Now, this year, I think the amount we're getting per meal has gone down a little bit, but we are still feeding everybody for free, so that balance should remain higher. But when we do go back to the normal reimbursement rates through CEP, our reimbursement rate is lower, we're going to need that surplus to catch up. Transportation revolving is what we talked about at the beginning, you can see the $200,000 there, and then foundation reserve. So way back, when we were getting ready to build our fiscal '22 budget, our enrollment numbers came out, and when they came out, our enrollment had dropped so dramatically that it impacted our Chapter 70. We didn't get an increase, we actually remained flat, we were back and hold harmless where we had been years ago. And so, you know, when people complain to the state to say, the only reason my enrollment stayed flat is because of the pandemic, and you shouldn't take our money away when, you know, the enrollment's going to come back. And so the state said, well, prove it, when the enrollment comes back, then we'll take a look at that and we'll give you the money back that we took from you because of your enrollment decline. And so they, they held true to their word, and so the following year, when we were getting ready to build the fiscal '23 budget, and the enrollment numbers came out, and our enrollment came back, I think we lost 100, and it came back by 50 or 60. So we got half of our enrollment back. And had we had that half of our enrollment, we would have seen an increase in Chapter 70. And so they sent us an increase in Chapter 70, 128 districts received this assistance, but we received it so late in fiscal '22 that they said you can hold on to this and use it in fiscal '23. So that's our plan. So if we have emergencies that arise, and positions that are needed, and you know, maybe an out-of-district tuition, we have something that happens, we have this money to spend for that. But it's a one-time thing, we're not going to get this again in the future. I have our ESAR balances there at the bottom as well, and you can see how much we've received and how much we've spent. So ESAR 1, that grant ends in, at the end of September this year. So we are spending down the last little bit, we have about $10,000 left there. With ESAR 2, that one's going to end in September of '23. So we've built positions into our fiscal '23 budget, and we are spending that down. The balance, we expect, so we spent about half in fiscal '22, and we're going to spend the other half in fiscal '23. And then ESAR 3 was just under $2 million that we have for that, so we've spent very little so far. We're spending some in fiscal '23, and then we're going to spend the rest in fiscal '24. And there'll just be a little bit left for the summer of fiscal '25. So we have a plan for how those funds are being spent, so that way we're not spending them all in one lump, we're not spending them all in one year, and then having a real quick cliff, and then remember the school choice is going to hopefully help us wean off of those monies in fiscal '25. So, oh, and then the other things, pre-K revolving and the athletic revolving, those are funds, fund balances that remain from when we had been charging fees for those things. So we don't charge for tuition for preschool anymore, and we don't charge users fees to students to play sports. So those two balances remain there for those programs. And so, you know, every now and then, I just remind people that this fund is sitting there, we can spend it. You know, you can buy playground equipment for preschool, or, you know, toys for the classroom. And then athletics can use it for special things that they need it for as well. But that money won't come back again. For athletics, we still get gate receipts, we'll still go into that fund, but that's about closer to $8,000 to $10,000 a year. Does anyone have any questions on the operating statement?
Okay, I don't see any.
All right, E and D is the next topic. So for E and D, I don't have the numbers yet, but I am putting everything together to send off to the Department of Revenue, and then they certify our E and D. And that has to be done by the end of October, so I'm hoping to get in a little early this year, in September. And we have a warrant, that'll come up with the warrant. And then I had Molly write a little note about CEP. So we were, we did apply and were approved recently for CEP district-wide. So in the past, when we had initially went into CEP, which is Community Eligibility Provision, which provides free breakfast and lunch for all of our students in, like, school-wide, even if students don't qualify. Initially, when we applied for this, we applied for just Hillcrest and Sheffield. And they qualified, and we were able to get free meals for those two schools. And then, I think it was a few years later, we applied for the middle school, high school. And they were able to get the free meals, but at that time, when we added Gil to the mix, we no longer qualified. As a district, we didn't qualify. So that's why Gil was not a part of it. But now, when we add Gil to the mix, we qualify. So we have applied, and so when the free meals that the state approved goes away, we will still have free meals for all of our kids at all the schools. Any questions on the free lunch, CEP? Okay, so I have one more thing that I added to the agenda, I put a link in there for capital fund request. So in October, the town of Montague will be having a special town meeting. And we are going to request funds, we would like to request funds, for additional money for the floor project at Hillcrest. So we had talked about how we ran into an issue with the floors. So we'd had the asbestos removed, and when the flooring company came to put the flooring down, they did a test on the subflooring that was there. And while it wasn't asbestos, it also was not a good subfloor for the flooring materials to be put down. So we had to remove that subflooring, and when they removed it, of course, that cost more money, it was a lot of work to remove it, and then leveled the whole floor, it took more time and money, and we went over budget on this project. So our expenses are on this list, between the advertising, the green environmental, which did the the testing for the asbestos, the compass bid, which was the asbestos removal, and then classic floors, which was the flooring installation, and then classic floors is the one that removed the the leveling, the extra subfloor, and put the leveling compound down. Between all of that, our total cost came to 300, just under $309,000. And Montague had allocated $295,000, so we're over by about $14,000. And then, part of what our plan was to replace all the asbestos floors in the hallways and the all-purpose room cafeteria kitchen, and then carpet the classrooms, so that way, if there's any loose tiles, they're carpeted, they're encased. So that doesn't create a problem, but we didn't have any money left for the carpeting in the classrooms. So what we'd like to do is request another $40,000 for the classrooms to be carpeted as needed, and the $14,000 for the, oh, the asbestos part of the floors. So that would be with, with a contingency added, it'd be about $60,000. So the Select Board, CIC, I'll be meeting with the town next week, I'm not sure which group we're meeting with, but we'll be talking about the floors at that meeting, and so I wanted to bring this to you before I brought it to them. You don't need to vote tonight, you could vote at a later meeting, and then I can talk to them, and the special town meeting will be October 13th. Jennifer, do you have a question?
Yes. How many square feet did the original project encompass? And what is the additional square feet that are being added?
So the original project, I think the main traffic area was about 12,000 square feet, and that overall, we didn't have a square footage for the non-asbestos part, where we weren't replacing the floors, we were just carpeting. So we had put in requests for some carpeting for 13 classrooms in addition to the asbestos work removal and the floor insulation. But because of the subflooring that had to be removed and the additional cost, we didn't have any money left to do the carpeting. So that's, the square footage didn't change on what we asked for and what we did. But the the subfloor is what caused the problem, and we'd still like to be able to put some carpets in, so that's, that's a larger part of what we're asking for.
And then I guess the other question is, is carpet the best solution? I don't know, just seems.
Right, we're still working on getting a bid to remove the asbestos and put the floors down in the classrooms as well. That wouldn't have, be able to happen until next summer. But the pricing to do that would probably be in the $200,000 range, or $300,000. It wouldn't be in the $60,000 range. So I did ask Heath to go to the vendors to get some estimates on what that would cost, just so I would have that information, but we haven't been able to get that put together just yet.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Joanne? So thank you for the information, and then if we need to vote on it before it's submitted, we can do that at the next meeting, that will give you time enough, correct?
Yeah, it'll be submitted when I go to them next week, but it won't be going to the town meeting until October 13th. So I will have to submit it before our next meeting.
Would you prefer then that we vote it tonight?
If you can, that would be good, yeah.
Okay, is that acceptable to people? Shall we vote for the request for the additional funding this evening, so it can be submitted to the town of Montague, and then hopefully go on to the special town meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bill?
I'll second it.
And Jennifer? Any other questions before we vote?
The only, I, I think that the justification for it is that we should be in position in time because the town needs a couple of weeks, I think, before the town meeting to produce the warrant. So they need to have a positive reason to put an article in the warrant. And that can't happen unless we vote on it.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, in that case, we have a motion, we have a second, we'll do a roll call. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Hello?
John? I think you're muted, John.
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Okay, anything else? I think that's it for us, Joanne, from you.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the school committee reports. We have one warrant this evening, it's an accounts payable warrant to pay our bills, the number is 3311. The total amount, and it's dated 9/7/2022, the total amount is $248,893.36. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Jennifer? Thank you. Okay, any questions about that? All right, we'll have a roll call about Heather.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you all. Okay, moving on to the business portion of the meeting. The first is the discussion of a statement of interest process for a new Hillcrest Elementary School. And I believe we have a handout in the packet on that. Brian?
So I just wanted to give the school committee an overview. You may remember that last year, the capital, some members of the Capital Improvement Committee and Joanne and Heath, and I think some members of Select and Finance toward Hillcrest Elementary School to look at the sort of breadth of maintenance that would need to be done over the next, you know, next several years and perhaps decades to keep that building fully functional. And we put together as part of the budget presentation process, so when we met with Select Board and Finance, we made them aware that we were considering submitting a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a new elementary school at Hillcrest. Given that our, our estimates indicated that building a new facility with with state reimbursement through the MSBA would actually be a cost savings to the town of Montague and to the district, as opposed to continuing to engage in substantial maintenance projects. However, neither Joanne or I have done new building projects. So we reached out to Todd Gazda, who's the director of the Collaborative for Educational Services, as it turns out, just before Todd became the director, he had completed an elementary school building project in the town where he was a superintendent, and had a really strong knowledge of the process. He did some quick research for us, and helped me to put together this little summary of the, you know, just sort of the initial parts of the process, because we were thinking, well, you know, we've got to start reaching out to people and get together a school building committee, but as it turns out, the submission of a statement of interest is actually the first step. And if that statement of interest gets accepted, if it doesn't get accepted, we continue to make that submission. Now, for regional school districts, for towns, towns have to have their governing body, the alderman or board of selectmen, or city council has to vote for one town districts. For regional school districts, it's the school committee who will need to vote for a statement of interest to approve that and to have that submitted to the MSBA. If the MSBA doesn't accept it, we simply go back to the drawing board and consider If the MSBA doesn't accept it, we simply go back to the drawing board and consider, and sometimes schools put in the same application the following year and it gets accepted. You know, sometimes it's just a matter of what's out there in terms of the competition for the money that the state is going to make available. If the MSBA accepts it, then the school district will have an eligibility period of two hundred and seventy days to initiate preliminary requirements, and that's the point at which a school building committee would be put together. And I will continue to work with Todd and Legal to get more information, but last year we began working on the project. We were fortunate to have gotten a few samples of recently accepted elementary school projects from other school districts, including their statements of interest. And Todd shared his, which his took five years, but it turns out that it to be accepted. However, once it was, they were able to get the project underway and completed just just prior to his departure from the town of Ludlow. So we found him to be very helpful. We will also keep the capital improvement committee as well as Select Board and the Finance and Finance Committee in the loop. Once we have a statement of interest that is really founded around an educational plan, which is the biggest thing that the MSBA looks for in the plans, that we'll bring that to school committee and we'll try to do it over the course of a couple of meetings. I believe the deadline for us to file the statement of interest is sometime in the end of April of two thousand twenty-three. The window, I think, opens in about February. So in the meantime, we'll continue working on the project that we had begun to put together last year and prepare to bring that forward to the school committee for discussion, review, discussion and consideration of submission of a statement of interest to build a new elementary school in Silver Hill Crest.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I think in the past, the recent past, there was a conversation about the potential of combining a school or something between Hillcrest and Sheffield. And so I have a question about that. And then another question is timeline you mentioned, and I've heard this in other meetings that sometimes acceptance takes up to five or so years. And I'm curious, and maybe this has happened, but a cost analysis of projected projects within the existing Hillcrest over that time period and how that compares to the cost of the new building and sort of how to expedite those plans and things like that. That might be too big of a lot of questions, but those are the things on my mind as I hear as I hear you talk about these things.
Yeah, so to answer the second part first, that we, Joanne and Heath had contracted with outside organizations who completed building condition assessments for each of the district facilities. And so having that building condition assessment for Hillcrest indicated that from last year over the next five years that you know, there was pretty significant maintenance that needed to be done on that building and that those, so that was the foundation for that comparison to the estimate of the cost of a new school building project with, you know, seventy-five to eighty percent reimbursement from the state and how that came out in terms of potential cost benefit. The other thing that it does make sense, according to Todd, his initial submission into his first two years was to have a separate elementary school. The point at which they got it accepted was when they combined elementary schools and put on an addition. So our tentative plan sort of already might work in our favor, which is to build on an extension from Sheffield Elementary School to effectively, you know, build off the back. The campus is enormous and there's there's enough of a footprint. We would just need to submit the statement of interest and then begin the process of examining the feasibility. But yeah, that was part of the plan, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Brian at this point? So Brian, you'll update us as you get further in the process and are getting closer to submitting the SOI?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so we will return to this again. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is that we have a custodial memorandum of agreement to vote on. Brian, do you want to explain that before we take a vote?
Yep, so this is a memorandum of agreement where a facilities employee had agreed to forego vacation time that they had available to them at the end of the year to ensure that we could get our projects done at Hillcrest as well as at Gill. And we wanted to make sure that that person, you know, didn't lose vacation time to which they were entitled, but they they did voluntarily step back into our buildings and worked hard to make sure that we could open up for the school year. And so the crux of it is is a vacation time buyback that is not part of the collective bargaining agreement. And we wanted to put do it as an MOA so that we weren't establishing precedent going forward.
I will entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
I'm moving.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second it.
Second, Heather, thank you. Any other discussion, questions or comments? In that case, we'll have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick? John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. The next item is addressing issues of equity. I believe
Jane, you hit, you actually didn't freeze, you actually hit your mute button.
Oh my gosh, I don't know how I did that. I wasn't even near it. Boy, this is magic.
You just thought about it.
I guess, I don't know. So the next item is addressing issues of equity, and I think we have a document here to cover that as well. If you and I see Jean has joined us. Hi, Jean, if you and Jean
Hi.
Give us a little information.
So yet yeah, Jean, please go ahead, since you have the the strongest knowledge of what we've entered entered into. Thank you.
Yes, yep. So I'm gonna head and share my screen for the document. I did make some updates with some more information that I received today from the group we're gonna be working with. But we applied in the spring to join the, an academy presented by Desi. They they offer multiple academies related to multi-tiered systems of support. We actually applied for the math one as well and we were accepted. So our new math interventionists are taking a really rigorous course on becoming a math specialist through that grant. But the the one I'm talking about tonight is related to issues of equity. It is called the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. And it is a partnership with Desi and a company called Black Print Inc. And what the purpose of this academy is, is a three-year process to work with a leadership team developed in the district that allows us to really be the team to be trained in culturally responsive practices and then really do a reflection on curriculum, policies, procedures, so more than just kind of the the instruction, but really looking at our systems and our our procedures across the district from the business office to superintendent's office, curriculum to each individual school. And so it's a three-year partnership. And as you can see, we're looking to get eight to ten members. There'll be some leadership and administration as well as some faculty and staff. And they recommend, and it's optional for a school committee member to be part of the team. And so one of the things I want to highlight tonight is that we would really love for if a school committee member could could join us and make this commitment. It is over three years. And I will show you kind of the timeline for what we'll be doing. But the goal is to have enough faculty and staff to represent the team. And then we have some initial dates, and this is some information I received today from from the group that we're working with, Black Print. They're a consultancy organization and we're gonna be, I don't know exactly how many districts across the state. We're in cohort C, so that means there's at least two other cohorts, A and B, out there with other districts. But it's pretty, it's a great honor to be part of this. So as you can see, these are the dates where we're gonna be having professional development. They all are during the day, so I know that might not be as easy for a school committee member to take part in due to due to your your work schedule. But over the course of the year, there's professional development. And then we have district planning meetings. We did meet already, a couple of us met with our lead from Black Print over the summer to give us an idea of what we're gonna be doing. And then they come and do an initial visit. So the goal is over the three years to really implement, review and implement what our areas of strength are in looking at equity and then what our areas of growth are and our gaps, so that we can really address those and and really move forward as a district. So this document also has some direct links to some more additional information and some information on Black about Black Print Inc., the company themselves, if you're interested in looking at it. But this is a, this is a big initiative that we're gonna be taking on this year. And as you can see, we've got a number of people already already part of the team and an email went out to faculty and staff today asking for some interest. I've already had three people are interested so far today. So we're definitely gonna have to narrow that down, but I'm really excited and I think it's really gonna help us as a district as a whole to really look at not only just, you know, in my my vision and my focus of looking at curriculum, but looking at all all areas of reaching equity for our students and our staff. So I'll take, if there's any questions, you know, if there's any anyone who wants to get more information or take some time to look at whether or not you feel like there may be a school committee member who's able to join us. Anything that's coming to mind right now.
Um, Jean, a question at the bottom of the document we had originally, the links. Do those take us to the information that you had on your document that wasn't included, the dates and the other information?
Um, this document updated, I think Brian had put it on as a PDF, so we will get a new link up there so that the dates will be fresh for everyone to see.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, because those dates, we act, we were able to decide on them. I was in conversation with the folks from Black Print today and we were able to select our date. So that's why I actually, those are fresh off the print.
Great. And are those meetings, the initial meetings taking place?
They're going to, we're gonna start virtual. We're gonna start Zoom and determine whether or not as a group we want to come in person. And that's because we wanted to make sure that people could get get on and get involved. And then definitely the visit later in, I think it's in March or April, that'll be in person. They actually come and they visit different schools with with some of the leadership. But we'll start it virtual and then if we decide as a team you want to move to in person, we will, or we'll stay virtual.
Okay, so if anyone on the committee has questions, they can refer them to you? Thank you.
Yes, yes.
John?
Um, is PDP is a professional development day? Is that what that references?
So PDP is the professional development point. And so unfortunately, the grant doesn't give us funds to compensate people for their time and most of it will be during the school day. So teachers, staff and administrators will get professional development points in order to keep up certifications at a professional level. We need to earn a certain number of professional development points over the course of five years before we renew our license. So since we won't be compensating people for working on this, they will receive those points, which will then lead to, you know, renewing their license.
What about the cost of substitutes during the day? Is is that that the district covers that? Is that correct or?
Yes, yep, we will be covering that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean. And thank you again for working on this these, those grants and your partnership with Diane and getting these competitive grants, getting us access to this really great work is is incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else on that, Brian, or will that do it for now?
No, I think that, you know, as we get issues of equity back in a regular spot on the agenda, I think we'll continue to follow up with the school committee on the work that we're doing there as well as this year's professional development plan. But given the work that the district has done over the last couple of years to get our staff better prepared, have a better understanding of how individual students and and staff members are impacted culturally in schools and then integrating that into our our process of inculcating new teachers, because they didn't have that professional development that we have to integrate that. This gave us an opportunity to get together with an organization that would be able to identify things like hard data that we should be looking at, you know, like how many students from particular cohorts are able to gain access to challenging coursework? And what do we have to do in our district to ensure that that happens? You know, what are the changes that we can make? And I'm just using that as a singular example. But that's really where the real, the real equity work comes from. And we don't, school districts don't always have the expertise. It's good to work with outside organizations to be able to find this information from within the district, because they can help us really drill down to those things that we can then make changes in policy, curriculum, our practices, and then reanalyze the data after implementing those new programs. And we should expect to see a positive impact as a result of our work.
Thank you. Okay, the next item under business is discussion of the appointment of to an open Gill School Committee seat. And we have received a letter of interest. And Christina, if you would like to join us so we can introduce you. Hi, Christina. Would you pronounce your last name for us so that I don't pronounce it incorrectly?
Sure, I'm Christina Markelow.
Markelow. Okay, so Christina has sent a letter, it's in your packet, and is interested in taking the vacancy that we have from the town of Gill. And we were happy to get that. Anything you would like to say to the committee?
I mentioned in the letter that I work in the educational publishing industry and just want to be fully transparent there that I'm an employee at McGraw-Hill, which may be relevant at some point if there are purchasing decisions, but I would plan to abstain from that. I haven't talked the superintendent back about how to handle that exactly, but would want to just be very above board with all any, any interaction that where that might, those interests might be at a conflict.
Thank you, that's helpful. Okay, well, that sounds great. And I think I am ready to entertain a motion to appoint Christina Markelow to the open Gill School Committee position.
I'd like to move that, please.
Okay, Haley, thank you. And did I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Nick, thank you. And we'll have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, very much so. Thank you so much, Christina. And by the next meeting, we will have had an orientation and actually, once you are sworn in by the town clerk of Gill, just please let us know and then we can hold the orientation. I know we had a tentative date. If that's possible for you to get sworn in by that time, that'd be great. You can probably check with her on her hours. So I don't give them offhand.
Sounds good, we'll do.
Yes. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to this.
Looking forward to it too, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is approval of minutes, the meeting of eight, nine, two thousand twenty-two. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. That was Heather, I believe, right? Thank you.
Haley seconds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, roll call. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. If anyone has any agenda requests, just please let us either Bill, Brian or myself know. Soon we'll be doing agenda planning earlier than we do sometimes. We'll be working on it tomorrow, actually, in the evening.
It's a, I'm sorry.
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday evening at five thirty?
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday. I thought Wednesday had been the Thursday, you're right.
It was a good double check.
A bad one, right. More than too much information and I'm gone. The next scheduled The next scheduled meetings will be September twentieth and October eleventh. Those are the next two regular meetings. And in that case, I think we've covered the business, though I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving to that.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And thank you Jennifer and Heather and we will take a roll call vote, Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you all very much. Good night.
Thanks everybody.
Good night. Thanks.